I call the September 20th, 2017 meeting of the Williamsburg Planning Commission to order. Ms. Scott, will you call the roll?
Mr. Granger?
Here.
Mr. Schaller?
Here.
Mr. Cleese?
Here.
Stafford?
Here.
Ms. Macbeth?
Here.
Mr. Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the July 19th, 2017 minutes. Does anyone have any changes or modifications to those minutes? Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes. Say again.
Mr. Granger?
Aye.
Mr. Schaller?
Aye.
Mr. Cleese?
Aye.
Mr. Stafford?
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Mr. Julian?
Aye.
We have no consent agenda items today, so we're going to start with our public hearings, and will be doing both public hearings as a group, so PCR 17-019 and PCR-17-020.
Thank you, Chair. Stafford and members of Planning Commission, this is a request by BSV Colonial Owner LLC to redevelop the shopping center into a new mixed-use development project named Midtown Row. On the screen is the current shopping center with existing buildings highlighted in yellow. There are five entrances into the shopping center on Monticello Avenue and two entrances on Richmond Road, which are highlighted in red. The shopping center is located on 19.44 acres and contains approximately 251,638 square feet of commercial space. The applicant has submitted a master plan with two possible layouts. Option one contains four new five-story mixed-use buildings totaling approximately 320,000 square feet of residential and amenity space with over 60,000 square feet of new ground-floor retail/restaurant space. These buildings are shaded light blue on the screen. A new 140-room hotel is proposed at the intersection of Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue, which has a darker blue shading on the screen. Building seven, labeled SOWs on the screen, will contain approximately 1,500 square feet and will retain SOWs by Victor, the ABC Store, and a smaller retail space. Food line, which is approximately 33,413 square feet, will remain and will be refurbished. The existing Ace Hardware building containing over 20,000 square feet will be refurbished and converted into food and entertainment use. This option contains 240 residential units, 624 beds with approximately 127,990 square feet of retail/restaurant space. A two-level parking structure shaded in brown is proposed with approximately 239 parking spaces. Option two contains four new five-story mixed-use buildings. However, Building four is smaller in size and contains less residential units, 40 instead of 72, as shown in Option one. This option does not contain the hotel building and remains a larger portion of the existing Building seven along Richmond Road, as shown in the darker shade of yellow on the screen. A portion of the existing building will be removed to allow for parking and driveway connection to other portions of the development. This option contains 208 residential units, 520 beds with approximately 162,696 square feet of retail/restaurant space. The two-level parking structure is also included in this option, which is shaded brown. In both master plans, the developer proposes a well-landscaped new road system with extra-wide sidewalks to encourage a pedestrian-friendly experience with outdoor dining and new retail establishments. A new road, College Road, from Monticello Avenue opens into a new public plaza designed for neighbors, students, visitors to relax and enjoy their stay. The developer is under contract with the owners of Monticello Shopping Center to purchase this shopping center to potentially relocate tenants from redevelopment of Midtown Row into Monticello Shopping Center. The city's comprehensive plan is a policy document that is designed to guide the physical and economic development of Williamsburg by offering a distinctive vision for both its natural and built environment. For zoning changes and special use permits, this document provides goals, objectives, and policies in evaluating applications. The 2013 comp plan designates this parcel as urban commercial land use, which is defined in the plan as noted in my memo. Surrounding areas are designated urban commercial, mixed land use, low-density, single-family detached residential, medium-density, single-family detached residential, Women Mary, sensitive environmental areas, and Chesapeake Bay preservation areas. The comprehensive plan notes the city's two oldest shopping centers are located in this area, which includes a mix of retail, office, and service businesses, as well as hotels, and time shares, and a small number of apartments. Because the urban commercial area is located close to the downtown in the College of Women Mary, it has much potential for future major redevelopment as a mixed-use area with housing for both college students and senior citizens. Maintaining a strong commercial component is essential, and an appropriate mix of retail space needs to be retained to serve the needs of the downtown area, including basic uses like grocery, hardware, and drugstores. I copied specific sections of the comp plan in my memo. I would like to highlight the following. The Neighborhoods and Housing section of the comprehensive plan states, "Build new mixed-use neighborhoods," and notes, "The Midtown Planning Area has the potential to redevelop into a mixed-use neighborhood with an emphasis on student housing." It also notes, "Develop alternatives for college student housing," and notes that "Public-private partnerships that facilitate the construction of student housing should be encouraged." City regulations should encourage student-oriented housing in suitable off-campus locations to supplement the housing provided by the college. Public-private partnerships that facilitate the construction of student houses should be encouraged, positioning the Midtown Planning Area as a location for new student housing. It also states that this could free up affordable housing in existing neighborhoods if students move from existing single-family neighborhoods into new apartments that are designed to address student needs. Providing more student housing is important, particularly since the Housing Needs Assessments noted that the college students help to drive up housing costs. A few items to note in the Institution section of the comp plan are, "There is a great demand for student housing on campus and in the areas surrounding the college, which has an impact on the largely single-family neighborhoods adjacent to the college along Richmond Road and Jamestown Road, and that additional student housing should be constructed on the main campus and in the Midtown Planning Area." Under the Commercial and Economic Development section, it quotes, "While recent commercial development and retail growth in neighboring counties have outpaced that in Williamsburg, the city is still a major player in the regional marketplace. But with limited land available for commercial expansion, the major mixed-use developments of Quarter Path at Williamsburg and High Street, as well as redevelopment opportunities throughout the city, remain key to the city's economic vitality." It also states that to promote the Midtown Planning Area as a major redevelopment area. "The Midtown Planning Area has the potential to become a multifaceted urban mixed-use neighborhood," it states. "Its location close to the downtown area and to the College of Women Mary should support specially commercial uses, and there is potential for redevelopment of the two existing shopping centers. Increasing the residential component of this area is important, and it is well-positioned to become an important location for college students. The proximity of the Williamsburg Shopping Center to the college and its location on existing bus routes makes it a desirable location for student housing." This property is located in the Urban Business District, B3 zoning district, and the statement of intent for that district says, "This district is established to allow high-quality mixed-use development in the Midtown Planning Area for areas designated as urban commercial land use. This area is more urban in character than the Corridor Business District, B2, and is therefore suitable for a mix of commercial, office, and residential uses. Because this area is served by transit and has a wide variety of commercial services within walking distance, it is a good location for multifamily housing and particularly housing for college students and senior citizens." Land to the north is Zone B3, lands to the east are Zone B3 and LB2, with lands to the south, Zone LB2 and B3, and lands to the west designated Women Mary and B3. The zoning ordinance allows up to 14 dwelling units per net acre by right in this district. In Option one, the density is over 12 units per net acre and just under 11 units per net acre in Option two. Parking for the site, the shopping center currently contains 868 parking spaces excluding the leased parcel, which contains 66 spaces. The proposed mixed-use project is located in the Midtown Parking District, and I outlined in my memo the requirements for uses in this district. The number of parking spaces required in Option one is 865 based on the proposed uses and with 1,117 spaces being provided excluding the leased parcel. In Option two, 793 spaces are required with 1,093 spaces being provided excluding the leased parcel. Public water service is provided to the project through city water mains along Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue. The developer may need to install new water mains in the development to service proposed buildings. Each building will be sprinkled for fire protection. Public sewer is provided to the site. The applicant proposes to use the existing gravity sewer systems. Additional gravity sewer systems will be constructed to serve the new retail, residential, and hotel building as necessary. The applicant proposes to use an existing detention pond located off-site at the southern end of the development for pollutant removal. They propose to purchase either water quality credits from the Skipworth Regional Facility or construct bio-retention facilities on-site. Stormwater regulations require 20% reduction in phosphorus for redevelopment site greater than one acre. The site currently is approximately 92% impervious, with development in Option one, the impervious area drops to 82%, and for Option two, it's approximately 83%. The Site Plan Review Committee reviewed the proposed master plans at their meeting on August 16th and recommended approval of the proposed text changes in master plans. The Architecture Review Board conceptually approved the conceptual designs which were included in your packet of the project at their meeting on September 12th by a vote of 6-1. This screen shows, indicates the proposed development along Monticello Avenue. This slide indicates the view down College Road, Road from Monticello Avenue and the view of the plaza. A special use permit is required for the parking structure, the multifamily, and the text changes proposed by the applicant. The following text changes are proposed to the zoning ordinance, which are outlined in the attached ordinance. One, to increase the percentage or gross floor area of any new buildings on a lot that may be devoted to multifamily use from 67% to 80% with a special use permit as shown on a master plan. For this development, it results in five stories of construction with first-floor commercial and amenities and floor floors of apartments. Two, to allow redevelopment projects to reduce the yard and transitional screening requirements. I'm sorry. To reduce the yard and transitional screening requirements as shown on the master plan. A request to encroach into the 10-foot sideyard requirements in five areas is highlighted on Sheets three and four along the western property line adjoining college property and onboard nursing home. The other encroachment is into the 25-foot rear setback for driveway and parking, and these are shown in the orange areas on the overhead. The third request is to increase the height of buildings from 45 feet from grade to not more than 66 feet from grade with a special use permit. This is needed to allow five stories of construction for the project. Number four, to allow a reduction in landscape open space and recreation area from 20% to not less than 15% of the total land area with a special use permit as shown on a master plan. The site currently has approximately 8% green space. With redevelopment, the master plan provides 18% in Option one and 17% in Option two. Number five, to allow up to four unrelated individuals with a special use permit. This development is designed for students, and it contains one, two, three, and four bedroom units. The developer proposes to rent bedrooms to students who share the common areas of each unit. This typically results in one, two, three, or four students who ask for a unit based on the number of students who want to live together. Each individual is leased a bedroom along with a common area in the unit. These units will include all utilities such as electricity, water, sewer, trash, internet, and cable. And six, staff has requested a proposed text change to add design to the definition of student dwelling, thereby adding it to permitted dwelling unit occupancy sections and special use permit sections as the zoning ordinance has outlined in my memo. In my memo, I provided the special use permit criteria as outlined in the zoning ordinance. Included in your packet was a fiscal impact analysis, which was performed, and a copy was included into your packet. The analysis was performed on the two mixed-use options for Midtown Row separately with the following conditions. Under Option one, the project projected general fund revenues are $7,210,325 over 10 years. Under Option two, the projected general revenue revenues are $6,73,125 over 10 years. Under both options, a portion of the existing shopping center will be preserved, retaining three current tenants, Food Line, ABC Store, and SOWs by Victor. Under Option two, a larger portion of the existing shopping center will be retained. The project will add no new students to the school system since the project is designed as a student housing project. The report notes that some of the one-bedroom units may be rented to young professionals and projects no students from those units either. Based on this analysis, the project will have a positive fiscal impact to the city over the 10-year period. A traffic impact analysis was also prepared for the project by Kimberly Horn, and a copy was included in your packet. It analyzed the following three options for Midtown Row for the project to be completed by 2020. The total amount of traffic generated under the three scenarios is expected to consist of the following. By right development, 9,720 daily trips. Under Option one, 7,010 daily trips, and under Option two, 6,940 daily trips. The blue shaded area shows the right-of-way area affected by the shopping center. Based on the analysis in the traffic study, the following recommendations were identified. Monticello Avenue will consist of a three-lane roadway with two lanes, one in each direction; a shared center two-way left-turn lane, on-street parallel parking between Midtown Row and Monticello Shopping Center; a relocated signalized intersection in both shopping centers; a two-way separated protected bike lane and sidewalks; traffic signaling coordination will be required to account for the expected change in traffic volumes and traffic patterns. The existing signal in both shopping centers will be relocated approximately 100 feet to the east of its current location with redevelopment. A second entrance into Midtown Row will be constructed across from Garrison Avenue in both options. For Richmond Road, it states, "To continue to monitor and implement new timing and coordination as part of the regular city operation and maintenance, and the two existing entrances into the shopping center will remain with some modification to the width of the entrance closest to the intersection of Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue as the construction of the multi-use trail." Monticello Avenue at Richmond Road, modify the traffic signal at the intersection to accommodate additional lane configuration capacity improvements to include dual left-turn movement, improve full-width exclusive right-turn lane, and roadway widening. Signal coordination and timing will be necessary to account for changes in traffic volumes and patterns. Richmond Road northbound will maintain one exclusive left-turn lane, one exclusive through lane, and one shared through right-turn lane. Richmond Road southbound will maintain one exclusive left-turn lane, one through lane, and one right-turn lane. Monticello Avenue eastbound will require construction of dual left-turn lanes, one exclusive through lane, and one right-turn lane. Lafayette Street westbound will maintain the existing left-turn lane, through lane, and right-turn lane. Based on the results of the traffic analysis, the future impacts of the vehicular traffic associated with proposed development, Options one and two, are anticipated to be minimal, with operations conditions at the study area intersections expected to be maintained at levels comparable to those today. They note the findings are based on anticipated improvements, upgrades to existing traffic signals, and associated equipment, as well as a second left-turn lane and full-width exclusive right-turn lane from eastbound approach from Monticello onto Richmond Road. The city engineer has reviewed the traffic impact analysis, and with the improvements noted in the study agrees with this findings. Improvements along Monticello Avenue and the signalized intersection, improvements to Richmond Road, will be constructed by the city in 2018 and 19 to coordinate with the opening of Midtown Road in the summer of 2019. The developer and city are working together to redesign Monticello Avenue to include new sidewalks, stoplights, cycle track, parking, landscaping, and street furniture. The city Public Works Department held a design charrette for Monticello Avenue's street improvements on September 6th. It was well-attended, and the improvements to Monticello Avenue were discussed, and citizens were given the opportunity to provide feedback on the cycle track, street furniture, lighting, landscaping, and method of separation for the cycle track and parallel parking to be evaluated in the final design of Monticello Avenue. And you can see that that design on this overhead. The owners of Midtown Row will dedicate to the city the right-of-way required to make the necessary improvements to Monticello Avenue for street improvements, parking, landscaping, bike lanes, and sidewalk. The site currently consists of an outdated and underperforming 1959 shopping center on 19.44 acres with 8% open space. Redevelopment of the area into a new mixed-use student-oriented development project that has both commercial and residential uses will benefit not only this area of the city, but the city as a whole. The comprehensive plan recommends the Midtown Planning Area as a location for new student housing. It also states that located student housing in this area has the potential to free up affordable housing in existing neighborhoods. The proposed redevelopment of the shopping center would have the potential to prevent additional houses in city neighborhoods from being converted to rentals and for the relocation of some students in these neighborhoods into a more vibrant area with student amenities. The zoning ordinance establishes criteria for special use permit. This project is in harmony with the adopted comp plan. It is located in a zoning district that allows a mixture of office, commercial, and residential uses. It is adequately served by public services. It does not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of significant ecological, scenic, or historic features, and the proposed design cited and landscape do not hinder or discourage development on adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhoods. The proposal is supported by the policies and recommendations set forth in the 2013 comprehensive plan as noted in my memo. Staff supports the text changes proposed and the special use permit request based on the above consistency review with existing policy and the 2013 comp plan, and recommends that Planning Commission recommend a city council approval of the text changes as outlined in the attached proposed ordinance and the special use permits to redevelop the shopping center into a mixed-use development project in accordance with the master plan, which contains two development options for Midtown Row subject to the following. The developer shall dictate, dedicate to the city their right-of-way necessary to construct the improvements to Monticello Avenue and Richmond Road as outlined in the traffic study. The developer shall coordinate with the city and provide an easement or right-of-way along Richmond Road for a new multi-use path along the frontage of the shopping center to connect to the new cycle track and sidewalk on Monticello Avenue. And third, the developer shall provide bike racks within the development, which must be approved by Planning Commission as part of the site plan. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Getty, the attorney for the developer, and Mr. Michael Jacoby, the developer is here along with their team, if you have any questions of them.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn. Does anyone have any questions for Carolyn?
I do.
Okay.
The traffic impact analysis was provided by Kimberly Horn. It indicates minimal impact on traffic congestion around Midtown. Were they taking in consideration the, that there'd be more retail than there is now, and thereby creating a little more traffic? Is that part of the study?
Well, part of the study was the first option is if the shopping center was totally full, fully developed, which was a 9,000 and some. So with the new development, it's less commercial space than what's existing there currently. So that's why the numbers went down in the traffic count. So that's why the traffic with the improvements to the intersection and Monticello Avenue and the other improvements outlined in the traffic study is why they recommend it will work, and the city engineer agrees with their analysis.
All the questions about the ordinance that restricts the height of buildings to 45 feet, wanted to raise that to 66. It's my understanding the reason for the height restriction in first place is so that you won't be able to see tall buildings from the historic area. And would these buildings be visible for any residential area other than the Monticello, the apartments behind Monticello, Matoka Court, anywhere else in town?
With the large trees surrounding their property, I don't think you're going to see it from their residential areas except from the commercial areas across the street on Lafayette Street, Monticello Avenue, of course, and down on Mount Vernon on the commercial area on that one. Part of the height requirement is because of the first-floor retail. The first-floor retail, I think if I remember correctly, they are 18 feet for the first floor at least, and then when you add the four floors of residential, that's what's making the height go higher. I would note that...
It slopes as well.
Right, and it slopes, and you could see that in one of the drawings. That one on Monticello sort of shows how it slopes down Monticello when you're going towards the college property. You can see that building appears to be lower, but it's actually not. It's still the same height. I would note that, I looked at our records, and our highest building that I could find basically was the Sterling Manor Apartments. And our records show that the four-story are 65 feet to the ridge, but since they have a gable roof, we measure to the midpoint of the gable roof, which is 55 feet. So that's going to be, if you go to Sterling Manor Apartments and look at the total height of the building, it's something that would be similar to the height of this building.
These are flat roofs, so you would just measure to the parapet.
That's correct. And the Sterling Manor building is 15 feet from Middle Street also, the setback.
Other questions for Carolyn?
I have a question. How will this impact, if at all, the need for essential services such as police and fire and rescue?
If you read the traffic, the fiscal impact analysis, it's basically not going to be that much more on the services needed, but I'm sure that developer can elaborate that on more when he gets up.
Okay, and have we settled the name College Road? Are these road names definitive on this?
I don't think they are probably definitive. I think those are names that the developer has chosen so far, but I'm sure he can address that when he gets up.
Okay.
Other questions for Ms. Murphy?
I had two maybe easy ones. One is, it's correct, I think you've said this already, I just want to confirm that there's actually a net reduction in retail space in both option one and option two. If you have it at your fingertips, I'd love to hear it. If not, maybe you can come up with it in a couple of minutes, but it'd just be nice to know what those numbers are, just so we can get a sense of scale, if that's okay. The second question was, I just wanted to hear more about the purpose of the parallel parking on Monticello. It doesn't gain us a lot of parking spaces and it seems like there is abundant parking. There's certainly the required parking in the parking lot itself. And I'm a little bit worried about the quantity of asphalt across there in that new section of Monticello, it seems like. Right. So what is, what is the, I guess, what's the thinking behind that little area of parallel parking as opposed to, say, additional landscaping or something?
The developer would like it also from a retail standpoint. The city was looking at it from a complete street design and we were trying to provide some parking in front of the new buildings and also I think it helps to slow down the traffic when it comes through the, that section of Monticello Avenue where it, when you have people backing up to go into the spaces. But it's also to follow the modern complete street designs where you do, you know, travel lanes in both directions, you do the parallel parking. We put the, we decided to put the bike lanes all on one side with the cycle track rather than having on both sides of the street and then to provide for a wider sidewalk. So I think that'll help to set back the building from the actual travel lane, so it'd be further back than what you would see if you ride down Middle Street and go by Sterling Manor Apartments building, which is basically 15 feet from the street. And we put in the street trees and the street furniture and the outdoor patios and those kinds of things. It helps to give it a softer edge.
Okay, thank you.
If no other, if there are no more questions for Ms. Murphy, I'll invite the applicant to come up and address the commission.
Madam Chairman, members of the commission, I'm Vernon Getty. It's my pleasure to be here today representing the applicant. We of course agree with Carolyn's report, the recommendation of your site plan review committee, and note the conceptual approval from the ARB. We'd like to thank Carolyn and everybody for their hard work on this project. I'm going to be uncharacteristically quiet today and introduce to you Mr. Mike Jacoby, who's the chief executive officer of Broad Street Realty, the developer who will share how we got here and the vision for this project.
Good afternoon all. So Midtown Road is more, today we're in front of you just with regard to the changes we're trying to achieve for the new portions of the project. A question we also always get asked is what's happening with the rest of the project and what have you. Also not part of our presentation today is the fact that we have the Monticello Shopping Center also under contract, which is not on that plan there. All of that we're incorporating to what we hope is a greater vision for Midtown Road. We were inspired, to be candid with you, by the goals, initiatives, and objectives that we read in the comprehensive plan for the city, conversations we've had with the Economic Development Authority, conversations we've had with city council, conversations we've had with staff, conversations we've had with our existing retailers, et cetera. So all of that went into our vision for what was, what we're planning here. And if you look around town and you look around the country and you look about what works and what doesn't work, you know, our general feeling is we're trying to create a place, a place that works for all the major communities of Williamsburg. Residents, students, and the tourists. That's what we hope to accomplish. We hope to accomplish a place where people want to go visit, want to go stay, want to go eat, want to go relax, want to go study, perhaps go to meet some friends. And that's the key to successful residential and successful retail in today's environment. You have to create a real true sense of place and you can't just say it. You have to actually provide those infrastructure items. You have to have an interesting place to live. You have to have an interesting place to eat. You have to have an interesting place to shop. It has to feel good to park there. It has to feel safe. It has to have green features. It has to have open space. So we've incorporated many of those things I just described into our vision. You also have to have the cooperation of a lot of hardworking people to pull the whole thing off. So we've got a pretty good team of both, some national experts on the architecture side as well, some local folks. We're using local engineers, local contractors, local zoning council. So you have to get input from all of those various folks. Just real quickly, final little point here. The Monticello Road Shopping Center, which is across the street, would actually be the first new retail that we would reposition. It's not part of the plan today, but we have a nice, pretty picture. We're happy to show you some other day of what we hope to do at the Monticello Road Shopping Center. Because it's first, we've been out marketing that. We've been out there marketing it with our vision for what's going to happen at the Williamsburg Shopping Center. Williamsburg Shopping Center and the Monticello Road Shopping Center combined are about 320,000 feet. Today they're about 150, 200,000 square feet vacant of that 350,000 feet, much of which has been vacant for years, years. I think there's space next to Marshall's has been vacant for 20 years. Stein Mart has been vacant for five years. There are other spaces that have been vacant at the Monticello Road Shopping Center for years. Because of the pretty pictures that we have at our vision, rather, for the Williamsburg Shopping Center and our plan for the Monticello Shopping Center, which is only 70,000 feet, we have 200,000 square feet of active letter of intent being negotiated at the Monticello Road Shopping Center. We only have 70,000 feet. Those, that 200,000 square feet includes both national retailers and some pretty good local retailers, some of which are accretive to this community. One of which, one of which is interestingly enough, from a national organic food grocer who may or may not be owned by a company called Amazon, may or may not be, in an active negotiation for that site, okay? Based on what we've shown them for what we're doing across the street and our vision. So to me, that's a big vote of confidence from both the local and national retail folks who we've already been out pitching this to. That's all I wanted to open with. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
Do you plan to devote all the buildings to student housing or is there thought to reserving one building or at least a portion to non-student housing?
You know, it's a, we're, it's the Fair Housing Guidelines. So we're marketing, which means technically anybody can live there. But the units are designed, our leasing program is designed for students primarily. The one bedrooms would be like a one bedroom you'd see anywhere from a layout perspective. So we imagine that in a one-bedroom unit, it wouldn't, it would be okay with us and not surprising if young professionals, people who recently graduated from William &amp; Mary or maybe someone who's got a spouse who's in graduate school and the other person's a working person, they would feel comfortable living in that environment. As far as other folks, a common question I sometimes have been asked recently is, do you include a workforce housing component or workforce housing component? The answer is no. The specific reason is, is that, and there's a few reasons for that. The primary reason is can you imagine a 53-year gray-haired guy like myself walking through, padding through the halls of bunch of coeds and how they might feel about that? Might upset a few of them, right? Number one. Number two, the major benefit of consolidating 600 students on our site is that 70% of the single-family homes in the Midtown and Downtown District are renter occupied right now. That in itself has driven up rents and is part of the problem. You have an affordable housing problem in this town. So most, a lot of those kids are going to come out of those houses and now families can probably afford to move back into some of those homes. The other thing is, the other thing is, is that in the greater Williamsburg area, there are 8,000 hotel rooms, 8,000 timeshares. The timeshares are at 95% occupancy. 8,000 motel rooms and hotel rooms are at the lowest occupancy rate of any municipality in the state of Virginia, but not by a little shot. So you have great stock of rooftops that would be perfect for affordable housing and would be grossly inappropriate inside of our center.
The vast majority of the students are here for nine months or so.
Yep.
Does that present a problem? It's presented a problem for certain retail stores in, near the college that were multi-use. I assume that your retail is oriented not just for students, but for the entire town.
I think our retail is geared more towards the community and the tourist community and not to the students, to be honest with you. The students provide energy and excitement and people. We like, we're human beings. We like to be around other people. We feel more comfortable when there's other people walking around. So the students bring a lot of energy and vitality to the street and to the park. So, and probably to the coffee shop we'll have there too. But that's, that's the primary benefit of having the housing on top of that retail is to bring that energy and vitality. The failure of other mixed-use retail, like High Street. High Street might be residential success, it's been a commercial failure. It's been foreclosed, it was just foreclosed on and just sold. The reason is there's nobody living on, there's nobody living at the retail component. So that's, that's our, our, our plan there. The students, you know, you can, you can charge them a little bit more, a little bit less, but they'll have a one-year lease so that they can leave their things there all summer long.
One last question.
Yep.
You'd be providing your own security as, since you're the managers of the, of the complex or relying upon the city?
Yeah, we'll be having a fairly aggressive management program in place. Probably some folks who have physically lived there on-site 24 hours. The reason again is mixed use. So we imagine that the whole, both sides of the street will be fairly active 18 hours a day. So we would provide a measure of security to both the residential component as well as to the public areas.
Thank you. I think that's all I'll bother you with.
Yep. I understand the flexibility that's offered by the one-bedroom units. The other units I assume are basically single-purpose. They're for college kids and students and that's, what I'm getting at is suppose William &amp; Mary solves its housing issues over the next eight or 10 years, or heaven forbid they had an enrollment decline. What can be done with these units? Because I can't see somebody coming in off the street and renting a four-bedroom unit when they're going to be sharing it with people they don't know.
I'm sorry, so the question is, let me just kind of rephrase. You asked me how could we repurpose those units?
How could they be repurposed if they had to be?
So that's a good question. So, you know, that would be a total change of strategy. So the ones are totally appropriate, the twos are totally appropriate. The fours, fours probably a little bit harder to convert, but they're fairly large. I imagine that would require us to reconfigure them. That would be difficult. I will tell you, I will say this is that I don't know how anybody's going to accomplish that because I'm not too worried about it long-term. Because the one thing we have going for this project is we're geograph, it's Phil State 101, right? We're geographically in the right place. So, you know, we've done a fairly pretty good study of the city. It's hard to imagine, and the college, it's hard to imagine much more density between us and the college. So we're, we're pretty lucky, I guess, in that we're less than a half a mile to the football field, to the hospitality house. There is no other place where someone could do anything of consequence in that place. William &amp; Mary really can't cross Jamestown Road for anything significant. They really can't cross Richmond Road for anything significant. So any competing project would be further away from us. So we're not worried about that from any, any perspective. And the way we rent our units is they're rented on a bedroom basis, not on a unit basis.
Right, that's, that's my concern. Do you know what the percentage is at your fingertips of the one to two-bedroom units to the four-bedroom units?
Yeah, it's about, there's about 8-10% one bedrooms, 8-10% two bedrooms.
The great majority is the larger.
Couple percent is three bedrooms and about 50, it ends up being about 50% of fours.
Thank you.
Other questions from commission members?
I would like to know about how long do you foresee the project, it's, once it's built, being there? The shopping center was built in 1959. I would have guessed when they built it, they would have planned for something that lasted longer than 57 years. So what sort of life expectancy do you see on this project before it gets scraped and redone?
Scraped? Wow, that's a loaded question. You know, about 50 years? I'm guessing. I'm just, I'm just speculating.
About 50 years, okay.
I mean, we own, we've repurposed, I've, I'm happy to go into Broad Street's greater history, but we've repurposed buildings that are well over 100 years old, well over 100 years old. So I doubt that we would ever quote scrape, when my children own this one wedding day, or my partner's children own this one day, I doubt we'll scrape the center. We're not, Monticello's been there since about the same time, Monticello Shopping Center. We're not scraping it, we're just completely redoing. So it will be there for another 50 years. It'll make 100. We're not scraping all of the existing shopping center like where Saus is and Food Lion and Ace, we're just redoing them. In their 50, they'll be there another 50. Apartments tend to last a long time if you keep them maintained and renovated.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a quick question too. It was mentioned that you were, for part of your, your water management, that you were going to use an existing detention pond. And maybe Carolyn would know this as well. Is that a city-owned pond or is that owned by the current?
It's a privately owned pond.
Has that been dredged or inspected recently?
The city inspects all the BMPs in the city once a year.
Okay, and it meets the standards that it was engineered to stand up to?
Yes, that was designed larger when the Food Lion expansion was done a few years back. So it's been redesigned and it gets inspected by the city's public works department every year. And if there are any maintenance issues, they send the letters to the property earners.
Okay, thank you.
I have, I have two sort of small questions. One is Tribe Square is our most recent model for this kind of arrangement, well, one of our most recent models for this kind of arrangement where unfortunately where the retail component hasn't been successful. What do you, what do you learn from that? How do you avoid having that kind of a situation here?
Tribe Square is a very modest-sized project. It's not, get the square footage of Tribe Square, but I'm going to say it's in the vicinity of our total project, 10%, not even 10%, 6%. It's comparing an apple to an orange, kind of. There's no critical mass there that, that would draw you or I over there really. I mean, there was what? There was a pita place there and?
Pizza, burger, pita.
And I understand when they opened, they were on the W&amp;M food plan and then they weren't. So they were there specifically designed, they catered to the students and didn't work. There's some retail that faces the wrong way, faces back. It's not on the street, it's not on, it's not parking, it's not, there's no public access areas. What retailer wants to go there, right? None.
So scale, scale is a big part of it.
Scale's a big, a big issue. Who it caters to is a big issue. Its location is fantastic, they cater to the college. Who else is going to go there, right?
Okay, and my other question was just option one and option two, we've seen them. And my other question was just option one and option two, we've seen them. What is, what do you see as the advantages or, how do you see these?
Of each option?
Yeah, yeah.
So they each have their, their pros and cons. By the way, it wasn't, it wasn't there in time. Option two is a little bit different than what's up there. It's, we're actually, we would do a little less retail because Garrison Street would come across. So, so be a little less retail. That's the only difference between what we're thinking versus what was right there. But the primary benefit of option one is the Cross Street that we've labeled Society Lane. I'm happy to talk about street names. It's better than Mike's, Mike's Lane. Society Lane, which comes from Richmond across the street and was designed, by the way, specifically to be part of a future streety, city grid if the college ever allows us to cross over. But that's, that Cross Street can go all the way from Richmond, all the way across the property and connect. That's, to us, that's a benefit. It allows for a hotel to be on the corner. We think the hotel, we would not develop the hotel, we would probably sell the corner or lease the corner or joint venture the corner. But I think for our retail, I think the hotel's a better use over there. It brings in folks to utilize that retail. They would go to the logical closest place across the street. So it would be about 135-room hotel. If it operated like the others, it would bring in 90 guests a night on average all year long. That's another 90 meals to eat in the restaurants. That's a big benefit. It brings a little more, a little bit more tax revenue to the city. That's a benefit. The con is, is that, is that I mentioned earlier, is that you look at the Williamsburg hotel market from afar, it doesn't seem very good. So the likelihood of getting like top-rate hotel company, I guess 50/50. We might be holding onto that hotel corner pad for a long time. So who knows when we might be able to position it. Having said that, we do have interest from some, from some hotel companies. The city, the college has identified a need for a hotel specifically inside of Monticello because they swallowed the hospitality house and the Days Inn that eliminate, and I think the city, and the city bought the Super 8 site, so 600 rooms have disappeared. So really, there's actually not too many walking distance hotels other than a lodge. And visiting parents with students can't, many of them can't afford the lodge, to be honest with you. So there's no select service hotel in there. So that would be a pro. The pro to the other way is I think we have a broader audience that would be interested in the slightly larger retail. We'd have about, we lose a hotel, we'd probably gain back about 20,000 to 25,000 square feet of retail. And, and we think based on demand at Monticello, we'd have a pretty good interest in that. So we get a little bit more, we get a little bit more retail, that would probably be good. That'll help drive some more folks give, to the other retail, probably less than the Parking if we do the retail versus the hotel, pros these way.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Beth, do you have any questions?
No, I have things for our discussion, but I don't have questions.
There are no other questions from the commission members for the applicant. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And I'll open the public hearing. I do have speaker's cards from a number of people. So first I'll call from the speaker's cards and then if there's anyone who didn't provide a speaker's card, we'll give you the opportunity to speak as well. There is a five-minute time limit to anybody's remarks and there is a little timer up there to keep you honest and the Scott will help as well. So as the first speaker, I have Adam Steely.
Can I make a suggestion? You know, when you're sitting back here, you can't hear a word when people are in this microphone. Would it be possible to speak from that microphone? Is there a problem?
I think it'd help if we pulled.
It may not be on.
Yeah, it's probably not on.
I've, I've been here for several city council meetings.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just speak into the, make sure you speak into the microphone. If you can't hear in the back, if you'll just raise your hand and I'll ask the speaker to speak more directly over the microphone. Mr. Steely, thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the Planning Commission and especially to Carolyn. Carolyn helped us get our ducks in a row when we opened our restaurant 13 years ago and I've always been grateful for that. I'm here today to speak just very briefly as the chairman of the Economic Development Authority. Elaine has been keeping us up to speed as our liaison, but I thought it worthwhile to come in and speak briefly. The EDA has been focused on this parcel of land since I joined the organization in 2013. It has been our highest and top priority in pretty much every conversation we've had each month. We see this as the linchpin to development and driving further development in a number of ways. We've tried to include the importance of this when we were asked for input for the goals, initiatives and outcomes for the city. Particularly the direct language pedestrian-friendly shopping and entertainment hub based on vertical mixed use. So when Broad Street proposed this, it sort of ticked all the boxes the EDA was looking for. I understand the concerns of some people about height, but as it's not going to be impactful from my point of view to the downtown historical experience or to anything about the closest neighboring residential units, I'm hoping that'll be mitigated. Some of our priorities were that we wanted to see a reduction of the retail space, which they've accomplished by removing 40 to 45% of the existing retail square footage. They're doubling the green space. They've created a bicycle-friendly master plan, which is part of the EDA's goals. The creation of street grids slows traffic and encourages people to engage with the retail experience as they're passing through. All of that drives economic activity and all of that makes this a more attractive destination to relocate another business as we can market the quality of life. And that's really why this is relevant to the EDA. The EDA doesn't try to weigh in on Planning Commission stuff. We don't, we don't know how street grids work. We just know that if we want to go out to another community and encourage someone to relocate their business here, we need to be able to offer them the kind of social and economic interaction they're looking for in a high-quality community. I would speak briefly because it's coming up in our conversations as well about neighborhood protection. We've been asked, as we look to bring businesses here, to be mindful of the concern of residents, that we protect the existing historic neighborhoods. And to Mr. Jacoby's point, I think that by attracting up to 7% of the entire student body could possibly live in this complex, that has got to free up housing if they're successful in that goal, which would make it more appealing again to market to businesses to grow or relocate here as we'd be able to provide places for them to live and experience the fantastic lifestyle you can enjoy in the city. Basically, the Economic Development Authority wanted me to share with you today our unanimous support for the organization and for the operation that way it's presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Nancy Canning.
I'm here as the Planning Commission. I'm Nancy Canning. I live at 209 Nelson Avenue, which is a neighborhood called Greater West Williamsburg Heights between, including Virginia, Harrison and Nelson Avenues and bordered by Richmond Road and Lafayette Street. This neighborhood is in fact midtown between Merchant Square on one side and the property that's under discussion today, the Williamsburg Shopping Center. As a resident of midtown neighborhood for 44 years, I consider the Williamsburg Shopping Center a part of my extended neighborhood and I have a vested interest in its future. We can all agree that the status quo is unacceptable. It's a blight scape in desperate need of renovation and invigoration with both useful function and aesthetic appeal. We would all like to see this area a viable contributing sector of the city. The essence of Williamsburg is its charm, its colonial ambience, its embodiment of style and good taste, its quiet refinement, its timeless elegance. These qualities are epitomized by the beautiful brick buildings on the campus of William &amp; Mary, the lovely properties of Colonial Williamsburg, including the shops, restaurants, inns and taverns along the city's Duke of Gloucester Street, Bruton Parish Church, also on Duke of Gloucester Street, the apartment buildings, shops and restaurants on Prince George Street, the Williamsburg Library on Scotland Street, and on Richmond Road, the Baptist and Presbyterian Churches, as well as Tribe Square and Wawa. These examples should in my view constitute the standard by which we measure our vision for the proposed midtown district. Personally, I would like to see brick buildings adhering to the city's current height limits. Townhouses, office spaces for businesses such as law firms, financial firms, insurance firms and real estate agents. Retail space to accommodate such businesses as an Apple Store, a fitness center, a health food store, jewelers, beauty salons, a sporting goods store, as well as an art gallery, an art supply store and an arts movie theater to replace our loss of the Kimball Theater. I also envision the retention of all the trees along Richmond Road, as well as a well-lanched central plaza, perhaps including a fountain, and ample parking spaces and sidewalks. What does not rise to the level of good taste and high quality that Williamsburg embodies for its citizens, as well as for its visitors alike, is unfortunately the current quote "edgy" design proposal for the midtown district. The midtown district proposal is essentially planned for student occupants over retail spaces, already tried and failed in terms of retail at Tribe Square. The buildings as proposed are too high, look metallic and impersonal, and combine garish primary colors with a prison-like gray. Such a design is depressingly ugly, doomed to become rapidly outdated and seems like a completely out-of-context alien implant in a charming colonial town. As for the plan's main purpose, student housing, my neighborhood of Greater West Williamsburg Heights is located between the off-campus student housing at Tribe Square, the former hospitality house now a student dormitory, and the former Days Inn, recently renovated as a student dorm. In addition, my residential neighborhood is riddled with houses rented to students by local and absentee landlords. Now, I didn't prepare to say this, but in fact, I believe the students who live surrounding my house are party animals and would not prefer to go to a, such a site as being proposed today. I think they like the backyards with the straggly beer cans on their picnic tables. Okay. In short, the existing, the existing residential portion of midtown Williamsburg already accommodates more than its fair share of off-campus student housing. In conclusion, I urge the Planning Commission to reject the current proposal in pursuit of a more acceptable plan that will both serve the needs and do justice to the aesthetic standards of our city. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Betsy Anderson and my home is located at 124 Indian Springs Road. So I'm off of Jamestown Road, not directly impacted, but I do live in the city, just like everyone here. I think the concept for this project is very good. I think it's something that's been a long time in coming, but I have a couple of objections. One is the materials and the colors that are in the second version. I think they remind me more of a Howard Johnson's than anything else. I'm sorry to say. And I think that we could do a lot better than that. And I also object to the increased height of the buildings. I can see letting the buildings go higher as they slope down the hill, but I think overall, letting them go to five stories is a little much. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Susan Gennaro, 220 Surrey Drive, Brandywine. I too am concerned about both the height of the building proposal and the colors and material used. I have lived in other communities where we have fought to preserve the character and charm of the area and this is the most unique community I've ever lived in. Once you have eliminated the character and charm, it is gone forever. The charm of this community does not begin and end in the historic area. It is something that we prize throughout our entire community and all of Williamsburg should reflect it. Five-story buildings are appropriate elsewhere, but they're not appropriate here. Once we become any town USA, we will never be Williamsburg again. Please preserve what we have, a very, very unique and sacred place, and help to keep it so by choosing the correct materials and the correct height for the development going forward. Thank you.
Richard Phillips.
My name is Richard Phillips. I live in Skipworth Farms. I've been a resident of the city since 1993. I do, you will notice that I do have a bit of an accent, but that's just here or there. My question and concern here, well beyond that, I'll tell you that I am one of the two elected members of the Soil and Water Conservation District. The city elects two members for the Board of Directors of the Soil and Water Conservation District in their biannual elections. The other representative of the city is Charles Moss, who is here today also. He, like me, initially was appointed to fill a vacancy and then we did, I did stand for election and he'll be standing for election next year. My concern with this project, I think it is, it represents an opportunity, but it also represents a problem. I think as some of the people pointed out, they're concerned about the aesthetics. My concern is not about the aesthetics, but about the environmental impact of this project. The center as it is now and the one across the street is the example of why we have stormwater management regulations. That kind of development created some very obvious problems in, as far as erosion and soil, soil and water degradation. We have an opportunity here to mitigate some of those problems and maybe even, I mean, to improve upon what was done and to mitigate what was there. The Soil and Water Conservation District has what is called the VCAP program. It's a Virginia Capital Assistance Program, which is a system of grants that are available to private properties or to public entities to assist in making improvements to their projects as in redevelopment or just as they exist, to improve the soil and water aspects of the project. I would strongly encourage that. We look into that for the city and see what we can do to help with this. On this project, there are a number of things that could be done that would certainly make it a more agreeable project and a project for the future. And that, and there's this line of soil and water. One is water usage. We have very little talk about that, but we are, as a nation, we are entering a point where we're going to have a critical concern about our water supply. We have the technology to actually reduce our requirements on water, but it's not yet really been incorporated into an awful lot of planning and by cities and towns. And I think we may find that within the economic return of this project, we're going to find that it's going to be very critical. I think it would be wise for the developer and for the city to look into this and encourage, it's probably too early to, or too late to require it, but encourage economic water usage, economic power usage, energy usage, these are all things that are being incorporated into projects elsewhere in the country as we move into the new, the new technology and the new. we move into the new technology and the new times. As far as the things that could be done here on this site, I've been watching this site since I've been here. I mean, this has been a blighted site as far as I can see for more than the 20 years that I've been here. It's been kind of limping along. Its location being upstream from Lake Matoka. Lake Matoka is a jewel. It's something that is there for the city, for the college, and it's something we should really endeavor to protect. And we've had many projects going on that really haven't taken that into account. They supposedly meet the stormwater regulations, but I can tell you, the regulations are inadequate. They've been addressed more to be able to give somebody authority to approve it than they have actually to improve the environment. And that comes from someone who sits on the committees that are reviewing the requirements of the state requirements, both from the standpoint of the civil engineers and from the Soil and Water Conservation Districts. We can improve, and we must improve. There are many options available. One of the things is we should be very concerned about preserving or encouraging mature trees on the site. There are trees on this site. It will be a tough planning problem to work around them and still have a good use of the site. There are many things that we could do as far as impermeable pavements, green roofs, bio-retention areas.
Mr. Phillips, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but you've exceeded your time.
I have exceeded time? Okay, fine. All right.
Thank you. Next, Cam Walker.
I'm Cam Walker. I live at 416 Harriet Tubman Drive, and I've lived in the city since 1969. So I actually remember when the Williamsburg Shopping Center was somewhat more vital and vivid and so on. But I agree with everyone who's spoken that, of course, it has been a blight on the city for many years, and I've looked forward to some sort of redevelopment. I agree very much with most of the points that Nancy Canning made, and I would say that I am concerned about the exclusive emphasis on student housing there, and also the height and the objectionable colors, shall we say. It seems to me that what the Planning Commission should think about is how this fits organically into the rest of Williamsburg. It's not that we have to somehow try to recreate a colonial atmosphere or anything like that, but I think there should be some sort of organic connection between the downtown all the way up Richmond Road to this so-called Midtown Row. So I hope the Commission would consider some of that in taking a look at these plans. Thank you.
I think this is Catherine Allport, Allsport.
I live at 115 Matoka Court and have been there since 1980. I will not be as elegant as Nancy, but I have some of the very same concerns. Thank you for your recent careful deliberations regarding the Richmond Hall dorm conversion. We were disappointed that the City Council did not follow your recommendations, and here we are again. It is very distressing that the plans for the shopping center renovation will ignore carefully thought-out, master and comprehensive plans and requirements regarding building height, landscaping, density of occupants in a unit, and density of units, and seemingly any redeeming architectural value. The height of the buildings and the ugliness of the exterior of the residential buildings is very distressing. Go to Short Pump, take the first left to go to Whole Foods in REI, and you will see on the right-hand side the same ugly residential buildings with failed businesses on the ground floor. The sidewalk is in constant shade, and that street is almost double the width of the planned inner streets inside of the development. Our skyscape will be permanently altered. In the city of Williamsburg, in most areas, trees are taller than our buildings. This will not be true in the renovation. One of the consultants at the meeting last week laughingly said, "Do you expect us to plant oak trees?" We have had one parking lot fronting Richmond Road. Its saving grace has been the mature trees. On Monticello, we've had a few trees on the left, really none on the right, and you remember what those look like. The trees interrupt the visual expanse of the pavement as well as the building. The current plans seem to do little to improve the visual impact of ugly building and expanses of blacktop. Can we at least make these expanses of pavement and parking lots permeable at a much better ratio than has been expressed by the developer? There are retention ponds. There's one by the School of Education. However, as has been mentioned, there is a creek that runs between Matoka Court and the shopping center that empties directly into Lake Matoka. What will happen to that? Attractive brick buildings with attractive windows, with shops on the street level and residences above, have been constructed in the city of Williamsburg, sometimes by our local architects, and they're very attractive. The shopping center renovation creates something that, I'm sorry to say, I believe will compete for the ugly award with the H.H. Hunt development that is out by Riverside Doctors Hospital. Our local architects have familiarity with what, as has been mentioned, would be organically and to scale, and unfortunately, this represents the architecture of shopping centers and new development in any town USA. Why are we allowing the beauty and the uniqueness of our town to be ignored and destroyed by designs that, again, look like anything in nondescript towns across the U.S.? The city manager has said a '50s shopping center is not historical or worthy of being saved. We all agree with that. But are we allowing a 2018 version of the '50s shopping center to be the replacement? We can do better than that. The density of the student population is worrisome, and I live on a street that probably has more student rentals than most streets in the city. And I agree that students like to live in neighborhoods. They like the freedom of that. They like having a yard for parties. They like to have plenty of visitors that are within walking distance and parties within walking distance. It would be nice to have increased student housing. I question that students are going to want to live here and that it will ever be filled to the planned capacity. Thank you.
I have much the same thoughts as what everybody else has said. And I live at 404 Idlewood Lane, which is right at the end of Griffin Avenue, and I deal with students a lot. And I, for one, would be more than happy to get them off my street, as much as I love them sometimes, and have them put in a density-type of housing situation. But I agree with what a lot of the other people have said here. I think that they like where they're at, and even more importantly, I don't think it's them who are making the decisions. I think lots of times it's their parents, and the parents like buying these homes. They like using them for investment. They like renting them out, getting income from that, and I can't see them being very enthusiastic about having them stay in apartments. So the other main concern I have is that with so many empty retail spaces in town, and while it's true that Tribe Square might be modest, you think right across from the college, if you can't make that work, where can you make something work? And I just don't see, you look at High Street, you look at Newtown, you look at the empty spaces. What happens if this whole thing fails? And that's the big thing. Are the developers going to be responsible? No, they're going to sell it off to somebody else, and then you guys are going to be going through this all over again. So that's something I think needs to be taken into consideration, because that's happened a lot in that shopping center, period. Also, I think if you are going to go through with this, I agree with David here that it shouldn't just be all students. I think, I went to a meeting one time in the community center, that we had a lot of local input, and there's a lot of senior citizens that are looking for places like this, that they can walk to things, that they're close by, and I agree that if they're going to be in there with students, there should be separate areas for them. But I think that's a lot more viable outlook than just having it all be student rentals, because like another gentleman said, what if the city enrollment goes down, and then you're stuck with all these empty apartment buildings that really are no good for anything unless they be converted? So I think all those are really good points. But the main thing is, I really think you need to look, if this does fail, what's going to happen at that point in time? I mean, the developers can be as positive as they want right now, but if they fail, what happens? Thanks.
That's the end of the speaker cards that I have, so I now open the microphone to any individual who's out there in the audience who'd like to address the Commission. Come on up to the microphone.
My name's Terry Dever. I own the Ace Hardware Store, Ace Peninsula Hardware, which is right there with not my name on it there. I bought the hardware store 28 years ago. The shopping center at that point in time was fairly vibrant. I think it was probably at least 90% full. Of course, everyone knows what it's like today. About three years ago, the previous owners, DLC, went bankrupt, and I remember when it was being auctioned off and it then became bank-owned. So I've been in limbo since that time, not knowing what was going to happen to the center. You hear all kinds of rumors of what's going to happen, and there's not a person in this room that has more at stake of what happens to the shopping center than I do. I have to, and obviously you can tell by the plan there, that I have to relocate, and I have no problem with that. That hardware store has been in that location, in three different locations, count the one it's in now. In 1987 is when I think, before I bought the store, is when Mr. Watson, who owned it previously, moved it from where it used to be on Monticello at the other side of the center where Fashion Bug once was to where it is today. Since that time, the Food Lion, probably, I think you mentioned it, probably '92, '93, was expanded. That made my visibility even worse from Richmond Road. You don't even know I'm there. So I have no problem moving. I mean, it's going to be a very expensive proposition, and it's going to be a lot of work. And so I am glad that Broad Street came and wants to do something. I mean, I can't imagine what this shopping center would look like 10 years from now if it was still going on like it has for the last 10 years. I mean, you're talking about maybe it's going to fail. It's failed right now. So anything we do to make it better, in my opinion, is helpful. So I'm for, as far as the colors go and that kind of thing, I'm not going to get into that, because I'll let you guys figure that out. But as far as doing something to the shopping center and as far as making it better, I'm all for it, even if I have to move, which I will. So that's my spiel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I live in West Williamsburg Heights also, which is about halfway between here and there. And I'm very excited about this project. I stand in opposition to some of my dear neighbors and friends. I was on the Economic Development Authority for eight years, happy to serve as volunteer, a lot of those as the chair. And as Adam Steely spoke earlier, we spoke often about what we're going to do to revive this failing shopping center that exists now. By any measure, it's a failure. So we looked at it as a win-loss. We lose if we get somebody who just wants to take the keys to that shopping center and lease it out to the bottom of the zoning code allowances. The price comes down, now you can't afford to paint, now you can't afford, and we've seen this movie before. It has a terrible ending. We didn't want that. So we're very encouraged when a new owner comes in and says, "I'm a redeveloper." That's what we need. So yeah, I strongly believe that the height is good. We need density. I'm not a fan of the color. I mean, I would soften the tops of the roofs and this and that. I think that can all be worked out. But what we need is an economic engine for the future. We need more reason for the brilliant young student graduates from William &amp; Mary to stay in town. They are our future. And to have a sense of place and look towards the future. When you interview the futurists, they say we need to be less reliant on carbon fuels, and this is set up to link with the bicycle routes, and it has open space and some lounging areas. And while I have the microphone, I love the idea of the hotel, but how about a rooftop bar grill would be nice? But anyhow, to keep this somewhat short, they say, "Measure twice and cut once." This has been looked at for a long, long time. All the attributes that the Economic Development Authority thought we should have in this area to revitalize downtown have been considered. Again, yeah, you could quibble with the colors, et cetera, and maybe the architecture may not suit all. That's very subjective, but I would encourage you to allow this project and to keep molding it in the best interest of the city. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, evening, I'm not sure what it is. My name's Paul Scott. I live at 719 Lafayette. Been there since 2005, which makes me a bit of a newcomer. Couple of quick points. I think welcome redevelopment of this area. We all know it needs to happen. A couple of quick concerns. I do believe the buildings are too tall. I haven't heard anything stated today that can't be accomplished in four stories that the applicant claims to need five. So just ask you to consider that. The one big issue I have specifically is with traffic flow, and what I see is a few flaws in this study. The data collection group reported a traffic flow study on May 9, 2017. Anybody that lives in this area knows what happens after the end of exams at William &amp; Mary. The last exam that year was on May 10. So this traffic study was conducted the day before virtually every student at the college, except graduating seniors were gone. The other traffic study was conducted on July 11, when there are practically no students in town. So my contention to you would be to compel the applicant to redo a traffic study that is actually relevant to what life is like when students are in town. So that's one very specific point, but I hope, and if I'm mistaken in those dates, I stand corrected. The other issue for me is on Lafayette, and I've already approached and received a lot of support from the city about the traffic and parking along Lafayette, but particularly the traffic. It's been stated publicly by city officials that exit 238 from Interstate 64 is the preferred access route into the city. That takes people down, what is it, 132, bypass over the tracks, and then they turn right on Lafayette. There's a long wooded gap there, and it's perceived as a non-residential zone, but it is. If you've ever lived there, backed out of there, or tried to turn left there, you realize really quickly that those speeds are really unsustainable. People texting constantly. There's been two cars parked on Lafayette Street that have been hit by distracted drivers since I've lived there, in broad daylight. So it's one of those streets that people, I think it's called residential, but there's no houses on one side where what we refer to as Casey Field is. So I would also ask, I'm not sure if it's in your scope, but as far as the traffic study goes, the impacts of traffic on Lafayette, to me, are significant, and I hope they'll be considered. I was a customer of Ace Hardware from 1984 to 1988. I won't tell you what products I was purchasing, because it'll give away what I was doing there, tubing and other stuff that the college students do today. But I frequent that store now to the point where it's a little embarrassing. I'm on a first-name basis with half of the staff. I love Ace Hardware. It's part of why I like living where I live. If Ace... If Ace, and I hope that the developer will be as flexible as they possibly can and demonstrate some goodwill to the community to retain a hardware store in the city. If they don't, all of our hardware and home improvement dollars are headed out to York County or James City County. And I think for those of us that live there and want to maintain our properties, it's a wonderful thing to have Ace Hardware so close. So ultimately, I just wanted to point out those few things about the traffic study and the dates, and to be sure that any traffic patterns and adjustments that are considered are done on a good data, and that traffic on Lafayette's considered. But again, I'm hopeful that this application, in whatever form, leads to a revitalized midtown. Thank you for your time and your service to the city. Appreciate it.
... planning. Thank you for listening to me. I'm Terrence. Live on Harriet Tubman Drive, Williamsburg, Virginia. This is an impressive, ambitious project, but it's not for Williamsburg. I agree with many of the statements that have been made. My comments are in three parts. Does it meet the comprehensive plan? Is it a solid idea? And the public needs more time to digest. Does this meet the comprehensive plan? I submit that it does not. If I remember correctly, we spent months revising the existing comprehensive plan with public hearings, and then another few months implementing the plan by changing the zoning text, again, with public hearings. If this proposal were in line with the comprehensive plan, there would be no need to change the zoning text again. And change it in a major way. Change the floor area requirement to 80%. Change height by adding another full story. Change housing to be exclusively student housing, and more. The application makes it sound like students over retail is the ideal for B3, but there are many more opportunities in B3, as have been mentioned, by right opportunities, including museums, convenience stores, daycare centers, fitness centers, medical, dental, schools, radio and television, theaters, and veterinary hospitals, to name some. It is by special permit, special use permit, that we also allow bowling alleys, athletic fields, amusement arcades, tourist information centers, and finally, multifamily, senior or student housing. By its order and the fact that it's a special use shows that the preference is not for student housing. This also points out all the opportunities we're losing by devoting this large area to student housing. But there is some ambiguity, and another section of this special use that says, "Through the redevelopment of existing shopping centers and apartments in this area over time, there could be a potential for 300 or more dwelling units," with an emphasis on student housing. So there it is. But it's not exclusive. It is a mix with general apartments. Also note the total number, 300 for all dwelling unit types. This application asks for over 500 exclusively for students. Is this a solid idea? For the last 12 years, it's been assumed that residential over retail will give this town a walkable, commercially successful result. But it may be that we just have too much retail. Building more and putting people on top of it will not solve the problem. The time for this paradigm has passed. The Wall Street Journal just published a research article describing this as a national problem. And I quote, "Landlords of mixed-use property developments are trying to take the chill out of the air by adding outdoor entertainment programs in hopes of attracting more shoppers in an era of declining foot traffic. Come autumn, ice skating rinks, fire pits, and entertainment such as tree lightings will begin popping up in open-air centers across the U.S. They want to create destinations for the community that might not be entirely focused on buying something. The moves come as shoppers handle more of their transactions online." But the applicant may not be concerned about empty retail. The emphasis is on the student housing. One can minimally build out a first floor in the hopes of attracting retail if you have three or four other floors of paying students. There is no retail guarantee. And Tribe Square, as has been mentioned, tells us where there may be trouble ahead. It's also true that visitors and town people are not likely to want to hobnob in an area devoted to students. As the applicant noted, gray hairs and coeds will not likely mix. The public needs more time. It was only yesterday and today that this proposal was covered in any depth by the press. I believe it was the end of last week that the package was available. It was only two weeks ago that there was notice in the paper. The regulations say the commission shall hold at least one public hearing after notice as required. So one is the minimum. So unless you are prepared to recommend denial, if there is any significant public concern, we need another hearing. Also, because after the hearing is closed, the applicant will have his chance to answer any objections, so unless there's another hearing, he will have the first and final say. Does this meet the comprehensive plan? Based on a reader's expectation, no. Is residential over retail a solid idea? There is evidence that it may not be, and there is ample evidence that we already have too much retail space. Do we need more time? The public does. The government, to the government, this is a well-worn saddle. To the public, this is a bucket of cold water. Thank you for listening to my comments.
My name, oops, my name is not oops, I'm sorry, is Linda Pinkus, and I live in Savannah Green. We carefully moved here about almost 14 years ago, from the northeast, and Williamsburg is unique and different from any place I have ever been, and I mean that in a stellar way. It's just wonderful here. But Newport News has city center, and those tall buildings and what they've done there belong there, in my opinion, but not here. This is so unique. In fact, I'm very much supportive of this project. I really am. I envisioned, when I first heard about it, one word came to my mind initially, what it would sort of resemble, and that one word is "a village." However sprawling it could be, or more than one story, but that's what I saw for here. And I agree with what most of the people said here before me. The colors, I heard the word edgy, and I'm not against edgy, but I think someone said Howard Johnson's, and I think that's orange and red and yellow. I envisioned blues and greens and edgy, maybe any brickwork could have gold threads through it, or something like that, to take care of that. I also want to say, in my life, I've learned, no matter what is done, whatever adjustments are made or changes, it is impossible to please everyone. And there will always be the dissenters, the people who wanted a different way. But if the consensus is, or the overriding feeling is, these buildings are too tall. In fact, friends of ours came from out of state, they're looking maybe to move here, and I told them about this project, which is a welcome project, is my point. And they know where it's going to be and have seen it, and they said, "Won't you feel like you're driving through a tunnel?" I said, "I don't think so," but that's because of the height of the buildings, the projected height. So I would like to see this succeed. And thank you for the open forums. I've never, in all these years, I've never done this here, but I may be back. Thank you.
Thank you. We've got a woman right here who's had her hand up for a little while, so I'm going to call on her, and then I'll call on you, ma'am, in the t-shirt, blue t-shirt, and then you in the blue shirt. So you first, in the gray shirt. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lucy Even Segura. I live at 727 Richmond Road, which is also in greater west Williamsburg Heights. I don't have any objection to redevelopment of the shopping center. I think it certainly needs some help. But I have a few comments about it. It is the Williamsburg Shopping Center. It needs to stay that for the people who live in this area. And I would really love to see Ace Hardware stay. I'm in there every week. If that's gone, I'm going to be going out to James City County or York County to do, to buy my hardware. And I mean, we need a local hardware place. It is a successful business that's been there for, I don't know how many years, but I love it. It's far better than any of the biggest box stores. So please think of the local residents and try and retain successful businesses. Even Food Lion could do to be bigger. We love having it. As for the plant itself, option one, I think, is awful. Having a hotel on that corner. The developer has even admitted that, yeah, occupancy in hotels is really low, and I think that would be a very bad idea. Also, as a resident, local resident, we love the trees at that corner, and we want to see them saved. Really be much nicer to have the trees there than a big building. And also, if some provision could be made when the area is redeveloped, to not run heavy machinery over the roots of the trees that are there, the mature trees, because that would kill them. So please take that into consideration. As for the style of the buildings, that's my big concern. The height, I think, is totally inappropriate. There's no need to go over three stories. It will create a tunnel effect, and the colors appalling. I don't think it needs to be colonial, but it should complement the style of the rest of Williamsburg. I agree with everything that everyone else has already said concerning the style of the buildings and the color and the height. And I know that some of the members of the planning commission and also the city manager like the edginess, but please need to take into consideration what the majority of the residents want. And if you look at the comments on the WY Daily site, where they have shown these pictures, they're overwhelmingly negative, the response to the colors and the height of the building. And on Facebook, the comments on there to this article from WY Daily, overwhelmingly negative. So I would ask you to please consider what the majority of the people want. Even if some of you like edgy, that's not why people live here. That's not what they like. About the student housing, please to the developers, keep in mind that anything that is geared towards students will not appeal to anybody else, nobody else. No professionals, young professionals, otherwise are going to want to live in what they consider a dorm. So you cannot combine those. Maybe have a separate building for students and a separate building for professionals. And one last comment that's not necessarily specifically about this, is that I think the city ought to give some thought to direct access to the college for students from, if they're going to be students in this area, like a path over to Compton Drive or something, so that they don't have to be going out on the streets onto Richmond Road. There should be some kind of direct access, either bicycle or pedestrian. That's it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Adele Carpenter, and I'm a lifelong resident of Williamsburg, and I own the Virginia Regional Ballet that is adjacent to the Williamsburg Shopping Center and the Williamsburg Community Pool. I'm very excited about this project, being in their backyard, and in the vitality that it can bring to all of the businesses in the area. I am concerned about the height level. I think that three or four stories is plenty. I think having the majority of the residents being students is, I'm trying to think of the right word, is not right, that for the center and for the vision of it, and also with it being so close to the arts district, trying to maybe be a little more arts-friendly. I'm not, as an artist, not opposed to edgy, but straight lines and I like, I think we could go softer and maybe something a little more artsy to look at instead of edgy. I think that I would like to see something with the absence of the Kimball Theater and with Phi Beta Kappa Hall being renovated and being a smaller and a more college-oriented place to rent. It would be nice to have a theater maybe instead of a hotel. I also am concerned about with college students and my business with the security of it all, with, you know, just that energy, as they say, that college kids have. I have a lot of young families and a lot of young children crossing the street. I'm concerned about the traffic patterns next to me. I haven't seen any or had any. I've tried to reach out to the company and talk to them about their plans for that, our section, and how that will impact us. I saw that there was a pool, you know, how does that impact the Williamsburg Community Pool? That sort of thing. So I just want to, you know, have them be aware of their other surrounding businesses, that they're not competing with another cupcake place or another ballet school, that sort of thing. So that's my concerns. Thank you. And I like color, so that's okay.
Excuse me, I'm a little bit nervous, so forgive me. But I, my name's Justin Holbrook, and I have been a near-lifelong resident of the Williamsburg and greater Williamsburg area. For most people in here, my lifelong is a lot shorter than a lot of the people here. But I know that I grew up here, went to school here, then moved away to college, and then did some work in Texas, and then just recently relocated back here. But I am a husband, and I am a father of two little kids. And why do we move back? Because we love it here. Do we miss things about other places? Yes. Do I have a big social life? No. But the social life that we do have is us hanging out with the other young families. And one of the things we all like to do is go look for places to walk and shop around lively people. Dwin, I don't remember his name, but the developer, was speaking about kind of how the retail section was more geared towards residents and not towards students. That kind of piqued my interest, because that certainly seems like a place that myself and my peers with younger families, younger professionals, would attend to. Certainly, I don't mean by my comment at all to be belittling of some of the valid concerns that people brought up, but as I look towards my peers, where I see myself in the next 10, 20 years, it seems like a place that I would frequent, I would patronize the businesses. Would I live there? No. Would I appreciate the young life living there? Yes. And I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to address the commission? Brian.
Good afternoon. I live at 131 Chandler Court in Williamsburg. The vast majority of observers recognize that the shopping center needs revitalization. But what strikes many people who've spoken this afternoon is this lack of attention to context, the way that the shopping center doesn't, the architect of the shopping center doesn't seem to have looked at the fine run of domestic architecture examples on Richmond Road. Now, somehow or other, you've got to find an architect that can make the transition to, into the Richmond Road and this very wonderful run of first half of the 20th century domestic architecture. It shouldn't be that difficult to find an architect who could sensitively blend the proposed development, which I think in general, most people approve of, blend the proposed development into the context of this very special place, Williamsburg, in which we all live. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the commission on this issue?
I actually only came here because it's a requirement as part of a school project. Since no other students are speaking, I thought I would speak up for the thousands of students here, even though my opinion isn't representative. Just a couple of points. Number one, I do think a lot of students would move there for the only reason that housing is really expensive for everyone, including students. And if they can find any place that's relatively inexpensive, they'll move there. If for no other reason than it's there, you know, they're kind of a captive audience. But I will say, I agree with all the concerns about the way these buildings looked. I lived in London for four years, and one thing that really irked me was there'd be a nice, you know, square of Georgian buildings, and there'd be one ugly brutalist or modern building that would ruin the entire square. And I think it's reasonable for residents of Williamsburg to expect that there'd be some kind of connection or flow with the broader Williamsburg area connecting to the local, to the central historical district. Whether that's brick, I don't know. Maybe the material's too expensive, but I do think that those are relevant concerns that should be considered, and I hope they do so. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other parties that would like to address the commission? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and open up discussion among commission members.
Elaine.
Yeah.
You're studying it out.
I, I've been, I'd like, I, yeah, I'd like to have a conversation about this, I guess is really where I'm at at this point. I guess I really want to like this, but have serious concerns, I guess is where I start. And I also hate when we bundle all of these special exceptions together, because it makes the conversation hard to sort of parse these things out. And while I've been, I sit on the, as the liaison to EDA, and we've been talking about it, and it, this does strike many of the points that we've been working on. I haven't, I don't sit on ARB or site plan where there's been discussions of these things. So just give me a moment to, I guess articulate some of my concerns, and potentially, people can discuss why we got here, that we're on some of those pieces. So there are five points on the special use permit, just going through them. To start, first off, our current comp plan and the current rules that we've been working under have a 67% area ratio of multifamily to residential, I mean to retail. And the request is to increase that from 67 to 80%. And so it appears as a nominal 13% increase, and so most fair-minded people are like, well, 13%. But in fact, 67% means you have two floors of residential to one floor of retail, and 80% means you have four floors of residential to one floor of retail. So it's a doubling, actually, of the availability of, you know, residential to the retail. And, you know, so to me, as an economist, at 13% on the face, which is actually two times, is actually sort of how to lie with statistics or something like that. And so for me, I really have an issue with going there. Why not some compromise? Why not three to one, you know, 75%? But where did that come about? The increase in the height, 45 feet to grade to 66. We have had, in the city, approvals through extended review, up to 60 feet, and that was done in High Street. It was also done in High Street, not for the buildings that were on the, on the road, but the ones that were internal to the project, so that there'd be a better streetscape. So I really, I would be more supportive of this if this could comport with the 60 versus this requirement of 66, in terms of that. Another piece on four, the, what is proffered, or what is discussed to us as, well, the 1950s shopping center has only 8% green space, so we should modify our comp plan to lower the requirements of the green space that are currently there, from 20% down to 15% because, well, it's still an increase. But I mean, our comp plan is a 2013 comp plan, and our sensibilities of sustainability and green initiatives, all that. I mean, I wasn't alive in 1959, so I mean, the idea that we're thinking that that's our baseline from which we should be improving doesn't seem like a really good place to be. And we're not seeming to get any additional landscaping or, or additional push from other directions, but it's all in that one side direction. And I guess of the final piece of the different parts of the site, of the special use permit package, or the special exceptions package, is the language to allow up to, excuse me, four unrelated individuals. Now, this has been separated from four individuals in a four-bedroom apartment. And so there's nothing here that I see that would prevent you to have a two-bedroom apartment with four people in it. And so how that's written of just having four unrelated individuals, I think is a caution that we should be aware of and that we need to think about. So four unrelated individuals in what-sized apartments? And, and then again, how this relates to other parts of the city. I think this is a place that we need to help support the redevelopment. I do have concerns personally on something that is so intensive in student housing that will be a destination for young professionals and other folks who are going to shop there. I definitely think that Ace Hardware is a very thriving business that everyone enjoys in town, so hopefully that move will be supported in some fashion. But that's where I guess I would like to have some conversation as to how we have all of these special exceptions, all going in one direction, and against sort of precedents that we've had in other parts of town. That's all. That's my first volley.
All right. So we've had an opening volley by Ms. Beth. Is there anyone who wants to, I mean, maybe, as you pointed out, there are these five different things. To some extent, some of them go together, and some of them can be separated, I think. In particular, as I see, the height and the change in the percentage are really sort of part and parcel of the same point, which is about significantly increasing the density of residents, right? Changing from 67 to 80 and getting the height is not necessarily about changing overall the amount of retail space, but it is the amount of residential that is above the retail. And, and getting the density there to make the shopping center and, and the retail that's in there successful. And I think one of the, the issues that has been pointed out about Tribe Square is that if you just look at the building itself, there is not very much density. There are very few people who actually live above Tribe Square, and there are four. One of the problems, I think, with Tribe Square is the envisioning four separate restaurants that would be in such close proximity to each other, even if you wanted to go dine there once or twice a week, you would only go to one of the four restaurants every two weeks. I mean, and, and, and so I think it is a different proposition. So perhaps we could think about the percentage and the height in terms of this sort of density issue, and then separately think about the open space issue, the four unrelated individuals. And then the, doesn't seem like there was a lot of discussion about any concerns about reducing the yard and transitional screening requirements. So maybe we should also just touch on that to see if anyone has any issues. And just correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Murphy, but the change in the yard and the screening requirements is not to change from what the current screening is, but just what is in there now is not, would not meet the requirements. Is that correct?
The change that's proposed for the screening, when you're talking about the screening and the landscape requirements, is basically, it can be done with an approved master plan. So it's, it's tied to a master plan that gets approved as part of the special use permit. So it's, you're looking at the, the shopping center today, which is, what, 92% impervious area? And they're trying to get some of the development to line up in the street alignments and those things. And then it's not a lot of encroachments for the encroachments part, but it allows to have the wider sidewalks and the development to have street trees and more landscaping and stuff as shown on that site plan that, that you're looking at, so.
Maybe we could just, if we can just.
Well, most of this encroachment is on the sort of western and southwestern edge along, you know, kind of a.
Right, yeah. So maybe we could just pick that out and, and decide what we think about that and then put it to the side, because it seems very separate from the other things.
Yeah, it seems to me quite acceptable.
Right. And there's that, the ravine in some ways, which provides an additional screen that is not part of the technical requirements. Does anybody on the commission have any concerns with the call, yeah, bullet two, to reduce the yard and transitional screening requirements as shown on the master plan?
No.
Okay, so we can, I could take that one off the table, and that's not something that we have a concern about. Okay, so that leaves us with four, four points. The percentage of the floor area that is multifamily use versus retail, the height of the buildings, the reduction in landscape open space, and the allowing for unrelated individuals. So who wants to start where?
Why don't we start with the four unrelated individuals?
Okay, let's go.
Because that isn't, that has nothing to do with design.
Exactly.
And it's related to density a little bit.
Right.
It has nothing to do with height either. So as I understand your, your question, Elaine, you were worried about packing more students than are anticipated into smaller units, right? And thereby increasing the density, increasing the total.
Sure, sure. I mean, I think that there's an unintended consequence with how that's stated currently.
Yeah. So what, is it, is it a simple, assuming this could be enforced, would a simpler thing as saying four unrelated individuals are only allowed in the four, in the four-bedroom units?
Yeah, I mean, like currently, the four-person rule has to have a 2,000-square-foot house, and there are these other, you know, collateral requirements, right?
Right.
So the idea that this zone is going to be blanketly rezoned, allow four unrelated in a dwelling unit, does mean that you have a smaller-than-four-bedroom dwelling unit and, and have that. So I think. Right now, it's actually restricted to that the two-bedroom or larger. So if that is the concern, I mean, right now, they're, where is, I can't remember where it says this, but it basically says that the four unrelated people is in a two-bedroom or larger unit. So maybe we, if your concern is that, we could ask that they consider changing that to four unrelated people in a four-bedroom. Right, because the, the numbers of occupants are based on numbers of beds. Right. And our bedrooms. So those two things are in, are in conflict with each other. Ms. Shelton, is that consistent? Okay. And would anybody, I don't have a problem if it's four unrelated people in a four unit.
Well, think about a suite and a dorm.
Right, right. And it already allows for three, so we, we couldn't restrict it to be three. It's just, in the two bedrooms, there couldn't be more than three.
There are dorm suites that have four people in two bedrooms, and they work out just fine. I don't, I mean, I don't, I mean, I think allowing maximum flexibility is actually probably better. But at site plan, the developer already expressed that they were hoping to mostly rent on a per-bedroom basis to one student at a time in a bedroom.
Right.
So it sounds like they're sort of self-checking. And I think giving them the flexibility to have four in a two isn't a bad idea.
Well, I think.
Especially if we're talking about trying to attract students out of neighborhoods where they've been nuisances at times, and put them in an area that's, that's geared towards students, geared towards young professionals, this actually goes further to do that.
I do think the four-bedroom rule is, is essentially designed for rentals in neighborhoods to limit traffic and parking and all that kind of stuff. And I think it's reasonable and does a reasonable job at that, maybe not good enough for some people. But I also think in this case, we have a lot of expectations about, about density, about traffic. All the, the traffic studies are, are based on certain assumptions about occupants. And I think all of that is assuming one person per bedroom, right? And so if we, if we can imagine, just say, two people per bedroom, right? Immediately, all at once, we've doubled, we've gone from maybe a, an acceptable density to one that is unanticipated. So, I mean, I, I do appreciate the point about allowing flexibility, but if, if the, if the numbers are running in a way that assumes for the developer, one person per bedroom, if we have concerns about more than one person per bedroom, it seems to me a reasonable, a reasonable change. And also takes, well, limits. You know, one of the concerns here that, that we've heard from commenters, and also in some of the correspondence that we've gotten, is, holy Moses, there are a lot of changes here. There are a lot of things that are being asked for. So I think if there are things that we can minimize, if we can minimize the degree of variance from zoning ordinance, I think that's useful.
And the only change we can do is the unrelated, we can't control how many people live in a bedroom. That is not.
Right.
Her view of the planning commission.
Right.
But under this, because it is a special use permit to allow that four unrelated persons in a four-bedroom or larger unit, which is consistent with the allowing of four unrelated persons in homes that only meet a square footage requirement. All right.
And it also comes back to this question Mr. Julian had about anticipating other, other kinds of residents in these.
Are there any other comments or discussions about that part?
I mean, we talked earlier about environmental impacts as well. And one way to solve environmental problems in urban planning is actually to increase density and to preference certain areas that are going to be more dense in order to minimize overall environmental impacts that come with sprawl. And I, I think, to me, there's two components to this. It's the flexibility for the developer, flexibility for student and young professional renters, and then also the environmental issues. And in some ways, density is actually really good in this spot.
I mean, I would agree with you. And I think that we have talked many times in Planning Commission over the eight years that I've been on Planning Commission about one of the issues and why it is so hard to maintain thriving retail and other establishments in the city is because of the density. And here, it seems to me, is a perfect location for the density. It is separated by physical features from the residential single-family neighborhoods, either large thoroughfares like Richmond Road, or that creek that cuts between the shopping center property and the most close single-family neighborhood. It is primarily, right now, of businesses and other things that will be looking at this increased height, that will be dealing with that increased traffic from students on bikes and in the multi-use path. It's also, you know, the School of Education or the College of William &amp; Mary, that property as well, which seems right to be the, you know, sort of the landlords that have to deal with this increased density. So if we're going to put density anywhere in the city, this is the right place to do it, as opposed to here in the downtown area or, or in the more single-family neighborhood. So I think we do need to accept that density is part of this new urbanism, and that's what people want. And we seem to have a really good place to put it. So, you know, when we talked about this, this two-to-one ratio of commercial to residential, that was really about not losing the commercial space, was not letting our commercial space, in my mind, being taken over by residential and losing that part of our tax space. And so I see for this limited special use planned area, that going to that 80%, while it is about, and you're right, you know, let's not use statistics to confuse us, going to a four-to-one ratio is about bringing that density here without losing the commercial. Because the commercial, I mean, the first floor is still commercial. It's just now we're adding more residents. And so once again.
But one of the arguments that they keep on bringing up is that the commercial is not for the residents, it's for the town. So that there's a struggle there and a push-pull there.
Well, I think you couldn't support the commercial just with the students, because students only have limited incomes. But I do think it is about that, that energy and that vibrancy.
Sure.
And so, to me, it's the, the combination of the 80% with the extra height is what gets us that density that I, I think transforms this from being something that may not work to something that will be successful. And once again, if we're going to have some additional height in any area of the city, this is the area to have it, because the height is going to be on one side, and then we've got the other shopping center on the other side with a large parking lot, right? And we've been had this expanded roadway, and then this large parking lot, which in the designs that I saw was still there. So it's, people were talking about it being a tunnel effect, but there's only, I mean, there is one side that will be very tall, but the other side won't. So it won't be these two monoliths, and then you go through this tunnel. It'll be, the density will be on that one side. And with the natural features of the landscape that fall away, I think it will, it will integrate better into the neighborhood than we think by just saying 66 feet.
I think this is the only place that we can do it. And I think it is the most viable place.
place, and everything comes together in this one spot between the revitalization of the shopping center itself and the student component. And I think that we need both in order to make this successful.
Yeah.
We're sort of shifting into the density and height and massing and all that stuff, which is still probably the most difficult for us to deal with. I wonder if we might kind of come back and talk about the open space.
Okay.
I, I do agree, it's clearly a net gain, right?
Yeah.
But it also, it also does seem that if we're looking for places to, to kind of trim nonconformance, there's enough parking here. We have enough parking. So, I wonder if, maybe this is a question for the applicant, but whether, whether there are trade-offs that can be made to get that, I think we're at 16 and 17%.
Eighteen.
We're at 18% in option one and 17% in option two. Are there things that can be done? Is there a reduction in parking? Is there, we heard about a rooftop garden.
Yep.
We had a long wish list.
Yeah.
This was under conceptual review at the last ARB meeting.
Uh-huh.
And it was suggested that, by Mr. Steeman, that at the end of society lane, it sort of just ends, and was suggested that perhaps that, that area could be used for more public space, and to sort of have a, not just a blank terminus into the parking lot, but some sort of green space, and it was favorably received.
So, if that was done, then would four come off the table? Point four would come off the table, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
It's a suggestion.
I don't know if, does that get us that extra two or three percent?
That was, that's the question. But I, I think what was, what I'm hearing, though, is that there are ways for the site plan to be adjusted to actually conform with the 20% versus having to state this down to the 15.
I think that's a question.
That's a question.
I think that's a question that-
That the applicant may or may not want to address at this point. Yeah, but the, the flexibility to, is that, is that require, the reduction in, in green space or open space, is that a deal breaker, or is there some room there to increase open space? Because you're at 18% already, it seems to go down to 15% when you're already at 18%. Couldn't we get you to meet us at 20?
We squeeze out one or a couple more percent is the question?
That's the question.
Essentially, it's hard to, to be honest with you, it's hard to imagine we lose parking, but it doesn't mean we can't gain, gain green space.
Okay.
You know, there are, you know, it's, there are little places here and there we could gain green. I mean, you know, everything's a balance, right? So, like, we have these extra-wide sidewalks.
Right.
Okay? The sidewalks are nice, they're lovely. That way, someone with a stroller can walk with someone holding their hand. If I reduce it from six to five, I lose that. Can I make it five feet and have a little more green space?
Sure.
But I'm going to compromise. So, there are other places on the site plan that we can probably squeeze in a little bit more, a tree here and there, just get into that percentage. And what's not part of the site plan that we are absolutely going to be doing, we're going to be doing a fair amount of additional green that's, that's not reflected on the plan, like, like potted plants and urns and things like that. So, it'll feel greener than it actually is contemplated as far as just pure impervious surface. So, yeah, I think we can squeeze in the one or two percent, but losing parking is probably not a good idea.
Not where you're going to get it.
Not a good idea.
All right, thank you.
When we talk about green and open space, are we talking about it from an aesthetic perspective, or are we talking about it from an environmental perspective? Because if we can't get that 2%, but we could get pervious pavers in places, or some sort of pervious materials and better, like, water management.
Carolyn can speak to how open space is calculated.
It's landscaping and green, not pervious.
But I think the question's a reasonable one, which is, is it intended to, is it really an aesthetic question, or is it about managing water runoff? In other words, what is that, what is that requirement designed to do?
It's both, because it's both pervious and it's, it's, you know.
Yeah.
Vegetation. So, I mean, it gives you, I mean, there's reasons to want vegetation, not just because it helps with the water runoff, but in terms of-
Well, maybe another way to put it is, is there an opportunity to mitigate not having that 20% by adding some pervious, having some pervious paving as opposed to impervious at different parts of the site, right? So, we don't get everything that the, that the 20% requires, but we get some of the benefit, right?
We're so close to the 20%, and as we said, we're, we're sort of trying to keep this as, as in-keeping as possible. Yes, it is a move up, but as Justin said, we're, we're building for the future, and so we really want to keep pushing on that. So, I think that, to me, I would, I would rather push and not give on the open space as, you know, as basically as compensation for sort of the acceptance of the higher density with the increase in the residential floor space and the height. To me, that's the trade-off, right? We, if we're going to let them go up, then we say, but we aren't going to let you also go out, because the point is to go up and to keep the open space. That's personal view, but that would be mine.
Yeah, but, and I think, and I think that that's where I find all of these points as part of the, all these special exceptions together gets to be difficult for me, because part of a special-use permit piece is that, okay, you get to go up, but you're going to have more open space, and what we're just talking about is you get to go up and just simply meet the current open space requirements. That's not the community getting more, and there's no trade-off in that special-use permit. It's just up and just bare minimum of what's the current requirement.
Right, and in my mind, the, the, you get to go up is that the community gets the revitalization of what is right now two dying shopping centers.
Oh, yes, it's a dying shopping center, yes.
But then, but since we're letting you go up, we're not going to also let you go out, right? So, then in some ways, we're going to hold on that line.
Commission members, I would note that the ordinance defines landscape open spaces and area containing living plant materials, including trees, flowers, shrubs, and grass. It may include lawns, plant, decorative planting, flowerbeds, sidewalks, fountains, wooded areas, water bodies, and watercourses, stormwater management facilities, but at least 75% of the area must be vegetated. It shall not include driveways, parking lots, other vehicular surfaces, or any area occupied by a building. And Mr. Clea, I would also, you had a question previously on the amount of-
Yes.
-commercial area.
Mm-hmm.
It's 251,638.
251,638 is the amount.
638, the existing shopping center.
That's existing, uh-huh. And do we have the numbers on option one and option two?
Yeah, it's on.
I think it might even be in the-
Turn it over. Option one was 127,990 square feet of retail and restaurant space, and option two was
Great, thank you. Sorry, one last question. Does that, does that figure in option one include the hotel, or is that exclusive of the hotel? Sounds like it's exclude, doesn't include it.
That just says the, that's just the, the retail and restaurant space, not the hotel.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're done, right?
Well, um-
Height, maybe.
Height. We still have to talk about height, height and percentage.
Which seems to be, yeah.
I think some people, you know, we want to hear from everybody.
Yeah, and I guess one of the questions I had about height for people maybe at ARB is, I mean, I actually don't care how many floors there are, it, under the height, the different height requirements that we have in different areas. So, was there ever a 60-foot height option provided? I mean, why does it have to be 66? I mean, we, and I guess part of me is on that, is, you know, there is this issue of being on the Planning Commission and trying to come up with rules that are comparable to other applicants, and so we have gone, you know, 45 is the, is the supermajority, 60 has been in special development areas, this is a special development area. I don't actually care whether they have five, five stories in, if they can get to the 60, was that not, I mean, ARB has a lot of give and take, so was that never brought back? I mean, was that-
It wasn't, it was discussed about the first-floor retail. If mine, mine serves me correctly, that was part of the height issue. I mean, we need to get four floors above that, and that was, can't squish that down too much. 66 is average height in this.
I think I heard that the, the first floor for the retail was going to be 18 feet high. I wonder if there's-
Some places.
I, I wonder if that's absolutely necessary, and that we might be able to shorten it a little bit. I've got some concerns about the height in relation to the proximity to the street. It was mentioned earlier that if you've got a tall building and you have a setback from the street, it's not nearly as overpowering. So, I wonder about that. The contour of the land, if you've got some lower portions of the land and you have buildings that are two different heights, maybe the lower portion building comes up to the same height as the portion on the taller part. And it's hard for people to really visualize how tall something might be, especially when there's basically a one-and-a-half-story there now. I know with towers and such, they do balloon tests, to where they float a balloon for a couple of days, and people can drive by and see how tall something's going to be and see it from the distance. I wonder if that's something that the citizens might appreciate.
Well, and it is, just to clarify, that the ACE hardware, the food line, and the SOWs are not going to be that height. So, it is not going to be that area on Richmond Road that is closest to the residential property that will be that tall. It really, it will be the Monachello fate. That, that's going to be the face, the part of the property that has the taller buildings right on the street.
Right up on the road, yep.
Yep.
I agree.
And what is that setback there, Carolyn?
Setback in B3 is 15 feet, but the sidewalk proposed in that area is at least, I think, 20 to 24 feet, if you looked at, yeah.
Yes, that's 20 to 24 feet, and then the roadway itself is, so I guess that shows that the roadway would be around 100 feet.
You've got an eight-foot bike lane, you've got, yeah, 100 and-
So, 100 feet from the building to the parking lot on the other side, not to the, be then, even, I don't know how far, how wide that parking lot is, but it's, that's a pretty big distance between the buildings that-
I don't have any problem with the height.
I don't either.
I think it's, if you can equal about six feet.
Right, I mean, 45 to 60 versus 66, to me is, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with 66. I don't think getting down to 60 changes things, to me.
Well, I guess, yeah, I'll say two things. It is, it is tall. It is, it would be some of the tallest buildings in town. And just to kind of put your mind in the right place, Sterling Manor Apartments is about the same massing-wise, and so is the condos in Newtown. Foundation Square, those buildings are sort of in this range. Foundation Square also has very high retail on the ground floor and then three stories above. And at least what I heard from residents, even though there were some, maybe, well, some comments about the overall design, what I, what I did hear a lot was, people are a little uncomfortable with the height. I'm, I don't share that personally, but that's, I also, you know, I'm a member of this community, and I, I don't, I don't, I want to find ways for us to not negotiate this, but, but minimize the degree to which this, this change, it is a big change, mostly everybody thinks it's for the good, but minimize the degree to which this change is bothersome to people. And I, I wonder, Ms. Murphy, you could, if you could show us the site plan for option two, just as we're thinking about this question of height and mass and all of that. So, one of the things, to me, anyway, that's appealing about option two in this respect is, from Richmond Road, the scene doesn't change in option two. It's, it's parking, it's mature trees, it's, it's the same shopping center we've got already. I presume a little improved, maybe with some new paint and some new windows and some new signage, but it's a net gain along Richmond Road. The, the streetscape that really changes, and, and does change, is, is on Monachello. The other nice thing about option two, from the perspective of the streetscape on Monachello, is the massive building, the, the building that presents the sort of longest facade, the longest front to the street, is the one that's furthest down the hill. So, the two, the two that are kind of higher up, that are a little bit more visible, they present a kind of narrow front to the street. So, the impact, I think, of that, of the mass is minimized. And so, just again, listening to citizens' concerns, it does seem to me that this one is a way to ease into the kind of modernization of Midtown by preserving much of what's already there. And I don't think, I mean, I heard some affection for the existing shopping center, but I, what I heard more was just concern about, about radically changing what's there. I, I, I think this is the place for a, a significant change, but again, I'm, I want to be respectful of what we hear.
But I don't find anything attractive to love about the, that large parking lot that you see from Richmond Road.
I don't either.
So, I don't, I don't feel-
The trees are great, though.
The trees are nice.
The trees are great, and the trees-
Are the trees, although, with the widening of Monachello, are the trees already going to be gone?
Well, surely not coming down Richmond Road. Surely we'll keep most of those.
I don't know how much, how much the intersection has to be.
There are not that many trees on the Monachello shopping centers.
So, it's only that side?
It's pretty, it's basically parking.
On Richmond Road are the large trees that are along Richmond Road.
And they're far, they're pretty far in the parking lot.
They're not looking to change much on Richmond Road's side in that plan. The only concern we have is trying to get the multi-use path-
Yeah, where does it go?
-down Richmond Road, and we're trying to get that in the right-of-way.
Okay.
But I think we're going to need to move into the development, the project somewhat, to increase that path from four feet now to eight or 10 feet.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to work that out and see how we can do that and try to save the trees, and you might have some trees come for that. So, that's, but other than that, on Richmond Road in this plan, it's the entrance. They're looking to redo, make smaller. And staff is looking at the multi-use path that connects to the one that, the cycle track and the sidewalk on Monachello Avenue, because there's not any more right-of-way on Richmond Road.
Yeah.
To put a wider path sidewalk.
Anyway, to me, in terms of thinking about mass, I mean, it's, it's mass as much as height, I think, that we need to be giving consideration to of the two options. This is the one that preserves the streetscape, essentially, the, the streetscape along Richmond Road, pretty well. I don't think, I mean, between the trees and, and the shopping center, I don't know that you even get a glimpse, maybe you do, but I don't know that you even get a glimpse of the, of the six, sorry, five, sorry, five-story buildings behind, until you make that turn and you head out Monachello, and you're on your way out to Newtown and that whole commercial strip. So, as I say, I, I think, I do, I don't, this is not a commonly shared, it seems, sentiment, but I, I think, I think the designs are appealing to me personally, to me personally.
Right.
But we're not here to talk about the design. What we are, what we can talk about and what we ought to talk about are these other questions that have to do with mass and, and scale. And the, the change in mass and scale, I think, is, is managed pretty well with, with option one.
Let me just reiterate that point-
Sorry, two.
For, for the individuals who are here, if you think that we are ignoring your comments about the edgy buildings and the colors and not discussing that, it's because that is not the purview of Planning Commission, that is the purview of ARB. And while we heard your comments, that's not something that we can weigh in on. So, we would encourage you to reiterate those comments in the Architectural Review Board, but that is not part of what we've been asked to make a decision on, and that's why we're not discussing it, not that we are ignoring your comments, but it's just not our purview. All right, well, other thoughts about heights of buildings, percentage of residential, option one versus option two? And other people want to have a comment on that?
Well, option one, well, option two cuts out the hotel, which we might-
I, I mean, I like option one.
Yeah.
And we need a hotel.
And I think that the hotel-
Visitors in for college.
Has been, is an important part of the-
Yeah.
-whole scheme, because we do actually need a hotel in that area, and it will serve, if you're having students living 200 feet away, parents have a place to stay that's safe, that's close to the kids. The college itself uses hotels. They use the hospitality- They use the hospitality house until they took it over as a dorm, but to put in visiting professors, people that are looking for jobs, things like that. So I think the option one with the hotel is more viable to the project.
And maybe I missed this in my reading of this, but the special use permit, the 17-020, the two master plans that have been submitted are still things that are going to have to go back through ARB and through site plans and all that eventually. So I didn't think that we were not voting on one plan or the other plan.
No.
We're voting on this higher use, special use permit, and then we will continue to see over the next months and year, or whatever, you know, these things that are coming forward. So, I mean, it, while we all may have, you know, preferences on one versus two, we're not making a decision on that.
That's correct, Carolyn, that's a good point to bring up. Other comments?
I'm concerned about pedestrian traffic, along with some other things, but one of the people from the audience suggested a trail that goes back, perhaps connecting with Compton by the old hospital property that, I think intentionally sending all the traffic along Richmond Road, pedestrian traffic is not great, especially if they're trying to get to the heart of campus. So if there's a shorter way, that might be nice. I can see the droves of students now, sometimes, just going up and down Richmond Road in large groups. If there's a way to create a trail that's safe and effective, that might be nice, and they might appreciate that.
I think the plan for the Monachello Road streetscape, correct me if I'm wrong, is for that multi-use path that comes in front of Midtown Row to continue down as a bike path past the School of Education and connect into the new bike path.
The new multi-use path to be constructed on Monachello Avenue-
Will connect through-
That's planned to be finished in 2019.
But they probably won't come back that way, because that hill will kill them, so then when they come back, they'll come back Richmond Road to save that hill, I bet.
Also, I can note, they can go down that path and go down the sidewalks and cut through the college by the path that goes behind the School of Education also. And the college is looking also to apply for another grant to put the sidewalk on Compton Drive again. They weren't successful last year in it, but it's my understanding they're looking to resubmit that grant also.
So it sounds like that may pull the students who are living here, basically through the School of Education, onto campus rather than going through Richmond Rec.
That would be a plus.
Other comments, or is someone ready to make a motion?
Well, I'll take a stab at crafting a motion.
Sure.
I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council the text changes of number one, number two, number three, and number five, with the modification that the four unrelated individuals only applies to units with four bedrooms or more, under the conditions set out in the staff memo, points one, two, and three, about dedicating the right-of-way, coordinating with the city, and providing bike racks. And that includes the approval of the special use permit with those conditions. Is that enough information? Have I been specific enough in that motion?
Does that include the definition?
Yes.
Adding the student design?
Student design, yes.
Can we modify the motion to drop five and vote on it separately? Is that something we can do?
I will take that as a friendly amendment. So the recommendation will be just for one, two, and three, and then separately we'll vote on the four unrelated. Okay, is there a second on that?
Second.
Ms. Scott, will you call the roll?
Mr. Granger.
No.
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Cle.
Aye.
Stafford.
Aye.
Ms. Macbeth.
No.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
No.
Okay, then separately, do you want to take a stab at your, what you want to do with the four unrelated individuals?
Sure. I motion that we have a vote on PCR-17-019, that would include all of the current point in number five.
So four unrelated individuals in any units of two bedrooms or more?
Correct.
I'll second that.
Mr. Granger.
Yes.
Mr. Schaller.
Aye.
Mr. Cle.
Aye.
Stafford.
Yes.
Ms. Macbeth.
No.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Julian.
No.
All right. That concludes that issue. Now for the rest of the meeting. We have no items under site plans and subdivisions, no items under old business. Does anybody have anything to bring forward under new business? Does anyone have anything to bring forward under other? We have our usual information items, and I would note that we do have three public hearings scheduled for October 18th, PCR-17-016, PCR-17-022, and PCR-17-023. And with that, the September 20th, 2017 Planning Commission is closed.